Good evening. I'd like to call this November 6, 2025 Kenton County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If you'd please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for the invocation.
As we, the members of this commission, gather here today, we ask that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render service to our fellow citizens and to our community. Let us continue to strive to make a better world by always keeping in mind the enduring values of life, and let us exert our efforts in those areas upon which future generations may build with confidence. Amen.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Argerst. Commissioner Baumgartner. Commissioner Berlins.
Here.
Commissioner Bethel.
Here.
Commissioner Bridges.
Present.
Commissioner Dorkel.
Hootie.
Commissioner DeAngelis.
Here.
Commissioner Dunham.
Here.
Commissioner Franks.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyder.
Here.
Commissioner Herman.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Sketch.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn. Commissioner Wickman.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much.
When members end their recess and reopen the hearing, they may ask for clarifications from staff or anyone who gave testimony. They will then close the public hearing and proceed towards a motion, a second, and a vote. Subdivision and waiver decisions are final and go no further. Text and map amendment decisions become recommendations that are sent on to elected officials in the jurisdiction where the site is located. These elected officials have the final say in zoning matters. Feel free to leave once the item in which you are interested has been heard. Items on tonight's agenda were advertised as required by law. Our staff posted a sign on the site and sent notices to property owners when required by state and local law. You do not have to have received one of these notices to speak. Everyone's comments are welcome. Before we begin, please keep these rules in mind. There are two exits from this room. One is located at the rear of the room. The other is located in the alcove ahead and to your right. Under normal circumstances, please leave the room by the door through which you entered. Fire codes prohibit blocking these doors or the aisles. Please keep these areas clear of chairs and any belongings you may have brought with you. In an emergency, please use whichever exit is closest and use the stairwell outside this room to exit the building. Restrooms and a drinking fountain are available directly adjacent to the elevators. Smoking is not permitted in the building. Food and drinks are not permitted in the public section of this room. Please turn off your cellphone or set it to vibrate so as not to interrupt our proceedings. Thank you for joining us this evening. This process works because citizens like you step up and participate. If you have questions about our processes or issues heard this evening, please do not hesitate to contact our staff here at PDS.
All right. Thank you for that. I apologize about the audio a little bit, but the important part, one of the most important parts, is to make sure that if you want the opportunity to speak on a matter tonight, that you've signed up on that sheet and that you sign up on the right sheet. There's a sheet for each of the two matters that we're going to be hearing this evening, and you also need to write if you're for, against, or neutral on that sheet. So please sign up. Even if you've signed up, you don't have to speak. You can change your mind and decide I don't need to speak based on what you've heard before, but you won't have the ability to speak if you haven't signed up after the end of the applicant's presentation. So, all right. With that said, we have the agenda in front of you, commissioners. You know, given the more complicated background of the Park Hills matter and the multiple folks we have here, I believe on it, I'd like to, I'd like to move that ahead of the public facilities matter. I spoke to the applicant on the public facilities, and they're fine moving it. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to make that change.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Any against? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay. With that, you have in front of you the October 2, 2025 meeting minutes. Any questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as it stands.
First by Commissioner Snyder. We have a second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Wickman. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berlins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyder?
Abstain.
Commissioner Herman?
Abstain.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
They are approved.
All right. Thank you very much. We have in our packets the September receipts and expenditures reports. If our treasurer has anything to...
No, everything looks good.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the receipts and expenditures.
First by Commissioner Ryan. Second by Commissioner Snyder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's see. You have your reports of subdivision plat letters in the packet, stage-two updates, which are none, cell tower updates, which are none, and then we have the report of last month's actions by legislative bodies. Any comments, questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to our first public hearing of the evening, which is file number PC-25-0010-TX, the new Park Hills zoning ordinance. The applicant is the City of Park Hills per Kathy Zimbro, Mayor. The request is, "The City of Park Hills seeks to replace the current zoning ordinance with a new zoning ordinance that recognizes Park Hills' development patterns and addresses new development trends." A link to the full draft text and proposed zoning map can be found at HTTPS forward slash KCPCKY.org forward slash meetings forward slash now hyphen pending. The proposed zoning ordinance includes the rezoning of an area of approximately 2.13 acres located on the south side of Arlington Road between Dixie Highway to the east and Irving Road to the north, approximately 135 feet west to Dixie Highway from R-1FF, a residential zone permitting single-family and two-family dwellings, to R/M, a residential zone permitting single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. Please note, however, that the city has amended this application to remove the changes to the R-M zone and the rezoning of the approximately 2.13-acre area. Mr. Dimbo.
Thank you very much. And for the record, I'm Patrick Dimbo with PDS staff. And this is a request by the City of Park Hills for a new zoning ordinance text and map, again with the amendment as noted that the map amendment portion of it has been removed and the changes to the RM. So we first do want to acknowledge the members of the working group who spent numerous hours on this effort, and they are here on the screen. In 2014, an entirely new comprehensive plan was adopted. Within this plan, it mentions the need for updating zoning regulations over 100 times. And then in 2015, entirely new subdivision regulations were adopted. So some history for this application. On October 11, 2025, the City of Park Hills Council authorized the application to KCPC for the new zoning ordinance text and map. On August 25, staff presented the new zoning ordinance to the KCPC Review Committee, Z21 Review Committee, where the committee members recommended the adoption of the new zoning code and map to the full KCPC. On September 29, the city revised the application that was submitted on August 11. The city requested that the review and recommendation of this issue by KCPC be tabled until the November meeting. Revisions included the mixed-use zone, lot sizes, density, and lot width, a proposed rezoning for an area of approximately 2.13 acres located on the south side of Arlington Road to residential mixed, hillside development standards clarifying that no excavation, soil movement, foundation placement, or building construction on steep hillsides can occur until a geotechnical investigation and site plan has been submitted and reviewed by the city engineer, excavation grading, tree removal, erosion, and sedimentation control, clarification to that that no excavation grading or related work may begin until all zoning permits for the entire project have been approved, required that permit applications specify stabilization practices to be used during and after construction with materials and methods subject to approval by the city engineer, and amending the planned unit development section to align with the existing zoning ordinance, which does not require open, a minimum open space, and reduces the size of the PUD from five acres to four acres. Then on October 21, staff presented the changes to the KCPC Z21 Review Committee, where the committee members recommended against the adoption of the new zoning code and map to the full KCPC. On October 27, the city further revised the application to remove the proposed rezoning along with the associated change to the RM text. The result of these revisions is that the current ordinance under review is substantially similar to the original ordinance that was submitted to the Z21 Review Committee in August, where they recommended favorably, again with the exception of some things within the hillside grading and PUD sections. The proposed zoning ordinance will reduce the number of zoning districts from 13 down to 12, with the R1EE and the R1FF consolidating into the residential urban zone. So this is the proposed zoning map for the City of Park Hills. The new zoning designations are generally reflective of the existing correlating zoning So on the north side of the city, the majority of this area is zoned residential. The neighborhoods with smaller lots are generally zoned residential urban or residential compact subdivision. These include streets such as Rose Circle, Old State Road, and most of Altavia Avenue. Neighborhoods with medium-sized lots are generally zoned residential conventional subdivision. This includes streets such as Wald Court and lots along Sleepy Hollow. Neighborhoods with larger lots are generally zoned residential large-lot subdivision. This would include Cleveland Avenue, Emerson Road, and Morgan Court. There are two existing planned unit developments that will carry over into the new zoning ordinance, and there, and the areas along Dixie Highway are generally zoned either highway commercial or neighborhood commercial, just as they are today. And as was stated previously, the area that was previously proposed to be changed to residential mixed will now remain as a residential urban zone, matching the correlating existing zoning district.
Are you able to highlight that on this?
Sure.
Yeah.
That is this appropriate here on the map. Can you see that? Within the south side of the city, Covington Catholic and Notre Dame Academy will still be zoned institutional, and the Far Hills and Cedar Ridge Lane area will be zoned residential multifamily, as they are currently. And then streets such as Mount Allen Road and St. Joseph Lane will be residential urban, while Cecilia Avenue and Scenic Drive will be residential conventional subdivision. There are a few areas that are currently zoned residential that will now be zoned conservation. These areas are either city-owned parcels or portions of the old Trolley Line right-of-way. These are areas that the city does not wish to develop as single-family, so they are designated them as conservation zones. Existing permitted and conditional uses have been converted into the new table of uses. New uses, though, include accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals, mobile food sales, as well as some additional commercial uses. Accessory dwelling units will be conditional within all of the residential zones except for within the multifamily. Owner-occupied short-term rentals will be a conditional use within all of the residential zones and a permitted use within the commercial zones. Non-owner-occupied short-term rentals will be prohibited within the residential zones and permitted within the commercial and employment zones. The ordinance will also include the 21-day process for map amendments, but will not include the concurrent processing of variances in conditional use requests. So as a reminder, the alternative map amendment process means that the planning commission's recommendations will become final after 21 days unless someone, anyone, files a request for city council to make the final decision, at which point the process will revert to the typical city council process. And again, that would be for map amendments. Off-street parking paths will be required to be accessed from a driveway and be perpendicular to the street, and graphics have been added to help clarify this requirement. The ordinance will also include additional requirements for swimming pools, including pool drainage. The applicant must identify the method to be used to return water to a normal pH level prior to draining. The location and direction of the discharge will be regulated so that it must be discharged directly into sanitary sewer via hose or directly into a storm drain via hose or on the subject property through a flat grassy area. The language will prohibit discharging into a septic system, provides filter backwash requirements, and regulates the rate of drainage. City engineer review will be required prior to permits for hillside development in addition to the required geotechnical reports, clearing and grading. Any costs associated with that review will be the responsibility of the applicant. This includes requirements for stabilization of disturbed areas. Stormwater drainage plans will be required for any project that increases the impervious surface by 250 square feet or more. This plan must be reviewed by the city engineer prior to receiving permits, with the applicant being responsible for the cost associated with that review. Other improvements within the ordinance includes site lighting standards, updating the landscaping regulations, clarification on clear site triangles, updated definitions, requirements for downspouts, dumpsters, and trashcan storage, clarification regarding private easements, and including traffic impact studies. Areas that will not be changing include the sign and fence regulations, board of adjustment regulations, previous approvals that were approved prior to the adoption of this ordinance, non-conformities, sidewalks for new developments, and the sections on adult-oriented businesses. Staff has identified consistency with the comprehensive plan. Park Hills is a mostly built-out community with a few opportunities for new development. The new zoning ordinance places emphasis on maintaining the existing character of the neighborhoods through, through removal of barriers for existing homeowners, ensuring new development will not negatively impact neighbors, and prioritizing the safety and stability of the city's hillsides. KRS permits cities to enact zoning regulations and provides the allowable content for zoning regulations, and KRS establishes that a public hearing with the planning commission is required before a city enacts zoning regulations. The KCPC Z21 Committee recommended approval. The new Park Hills zoning ordinance text and map meets the requirements of KRS. The city is authorized to enact permanent land use regulations and other kinds of growth management, regulations to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the planning unit, to facilitate orderly and harmonious development and the visual or historical character of the unit, and to regulate the density of population and intensity of land uses in order to provide adequate light and air. The new Park Hills zoning ordinance text and map is generally consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the Kenton County Comprehensive Plan, as well as the recommended land use map. And again, this, as presented, is substantially similar to the committees, what the committee reviewed in August. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Dimbo?
I got one.
Patrick, on the requirement for city engineering review, is that common with other city ordinances in the county?
This would be unique to Park Hills as far as requiring that city engineer review as part of the ordinance. Typically, geotechnical reports when they come in are forwarded to the cities, and if they wish to have those reviewed with the city engineer, they can.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a question.
Yeah, Mr. Bethel.
Mr. Dimbo, you mentioned the draining of the swimming pools. Do you go into the sanitary and storm? Go into the wall?
Yes, that's how it was written.
Okay.
Mr.?
Mr. Dimbo, there's been some press and some communications with this commission and with our committee about the mechanics and the votes of getting this here. Are we concerned with that at all?
I would defer that to our legal counsel.
Sure, my mic's on. Appreciate that, Mr. Commissioner Bridges. Yes, I want to thank everybody for appearing here. We always love to see the public here in interest in applications before the planning commission, but just want to clarify the scope of our review. Our limited review for tonight is to determine whether to replace the current zoning ordinance is with the new Z21 ordinances, and that's all we have authority and jurisdiction to review. As Commissioner Bridges indicated, I understand there's been discussions at Park Hills whether there has been proper voting to bring the matter before us. We received a resolution for this modified application from the city. We received confirmation from the city attorney that he believes it's properly before us. So we can't look past that. No jurisdiction, no authority. We have to comply with our statutory duty, which is to act on the application before us within 60 days. And so the only issues we're going to be allowed to have testimony about or discussion about is whether these new proposed Z21 ordinances are reasonable and appropriate to replace the former zoning ordinances at Park Hills, and we have to limit our discussion to that based on our jurisdiction and authority as a planning commission.
And just to be clear, I think most people realize, we're a recommending body, so we're not, this is not like you're, it's a judge and we're making the final decision. It's just, we're reviewing it, we'll make a recommendation, it'll go back to the city. So that's the scope of what we'll be doing tonight on that. Any other questions for Mr. Dimbo? All right. Hearing none. I have signed up, before I call the applicant, I have signed up to speak. Jim Fowler, neutral. I have Nick King, neutral, and then I have Kathy Zimbro and Dan Braun for the city as well, the applicant. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter that is not signed up yet? Okay. All right. Then I would like our applicant, if our applicant would like to say anything? Anyone with the city?
Yes, I'm Kathy Zimbro, Mayor in Park Hills. And we, I know it came before, in 826, they had the preliminary hearing before, and it was recommended. And then we added something, but then there was a lot of commotion about adding the RM. My understanding was that you could do that, add the RM from the RF, R1FF to RM density and the, along with the RU, to add it into the Z21. But since it was recommended not to do that after much discussion, we went before, we got, I had asked all the council, and we had a vote on it, and I also sent a letter to PDS to, you know, to put it back, or PSKS, and to put it as we originally submitted without the density. And so that zoning was removed because it seemed like it was a really controversial issue, which I didn't really know was a controversial issue, actually. So we removed that to take it back because we'd like to see it get approved, and that's what we were hoping to do. I know it was favorable before, and some of the questions that came up just a few minutes ago about this drainage of the pools, that came up over COVID. There were several pools put in, and they were just throwing the water out when we have a big rain. They would throw the water out, and it would just run on other people's property and flood it. And so we had to get some measure, and the SD1 actually has that plan that you see in there. We kind of put that into the zoning so that people would notice that right away and not just forget about it until it's occurred and... just forget about it until it's occurred and flooded other people's property. And as far as Jay Bear, our engineer, reviewing any hillside properties, we've had 20% slope looked at for years and years and years, long before I was ever involved. And it's just because we have a lot of hills, and they, and they kind of washed down, so I know that was one of the reasons that's critical. And so the, actually, the memo that I had from, I think was in your paperwork as well, there was a memo back given to us from PDS at that time, and the 1, 4, and 7 were actually the controversial issues that we asked to remove and just adopt the other with our Z-21. So that's our request today.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. So would it be Park Hills' intention to do the requested zone change at a later date?
Right. I was told that do it as a map amendment. See, we've, long story short, there was a couple other cities that actually included it, and they said, why don't you include it? You know, and so we went through that, and I thought that was a good thing, but it, it was very controversial, so we said, well, let's, let's not do it. So we removed it, and we'll do it as a map amendment at another point.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Braun?
My name's Dan Braun. I'm the city attorney for the city of Park Hills. I think Mr. Smith is correct. The matters in controversy are not before this board, so I'm not going to address those tonight. I think the resolution speaks for itself, and I do believe that's what council wants you to determine tonight. That's really all I've got to say.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Braun? Okay. Let's see, I don't have anyone signed up against Mr. Fowler. And I also note that you have, you sent an email as well.
Same thing.
So I don't need to insert the email in the record. You're just going to give your testimony tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you to this commission for giving me time to speak. I am Jim Fowler, resident of 829 Aberdeen Road since 1992. This property is adjacent to the property the city Park Hills owns, 1500 Dixie Highway. This is part of the two properties that have been a focus of developers looking to build on the former Sashuan Garden property.
Mr. Fowler, man, I hate to interrupt, but that map amendment item is not before us tonight.
Understand.
So we're focused on the Z-21 application as it currently stands.
Yes, sir.
And that's what we need the testimony to be focused on. You'll have the opportunity, if they make a file for a map amendment for that, that property, you're, that would be the appropriate time to talk about it then.
To talk about that property.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you want to talk about the Z-21 in general compared to, as it currently stands with that removed.
In general, I think you'll see in here that I was pleased to see the zone, the Z-21 changed back to residential urban. And that's what was presented to us as single-family and two-family housing, and to see that changed was, was confusing, unfortunately. So I guess I'll wait till the next map amendment process occurs.
Yeah. Would you want me to put the full email in?
Please do.
Okay, all right.
I think it's, it's good information for everybody. It's just about the, about the land that you're talking about.
All right, I'll mark those exhibit A. Okay, any questions for Mr. Fowler? All right, thank you. Next up, Mr. King.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. In fact, actually, I think mine is more about the mapping amendment as well. It has to do with regards to the retention pond they want to put at the end of the property right there along Dixie Highway.
I'm sorry, can, can you give me your full name and address for the record?
Yeah, I'm Nick King. I'm the representative of Dr. Joseph James King's Trust. We own the property of 1510 Dixie Highway, which is right next to Sashuan Gardens.
Okay.
And again, I think this would be more for the, the map change.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's see, that's all I have signed up to speak. I did receive a couple other emails, and I'll summarize and put in the record. There's an email from Carl and Stella Snowden, walking, you know, kind of talking about the concerns about the passing of the manner in which the, the October 27th meeting and the, and the vote on the resolution was had, and highlighting that the Z-21 subcommittee voted against the prior proposal that had the RM change in it. So I'll put that in as Exhibit B. I have an email from James and Lynn Linart, and same, 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 same items here, concerned about how the resolution was passed. So I'll do Exhibit C. And then an email from Gretchen Stevenson, once again, concerned about the manner in which the resolution was voted on, and noting that the Z-21 subcommittee recommended against it, the, the Z-21 application when it had the two parcels being rezoned to RM. So we'll put that in as Exhibit D, and that's all I have. Okay. We'll reassess public hearing for discussion among commissioners at this point. Certainly understand the confusion that some folks had, and, you know, I'm glad that the city is approaching it the way they're approaching it. Makes a lot of sense, and the Z-21 application seems very appropriate. Anyone else has any thoughts? Yes, Commissioner?
Just a little thoughts on, on the Z-21 committee. Mr. Commissioner Bethel and I have been on it and chaired it off and on together since the beginning. I know Commissioner Martin's been on there forever. The Z-21 committee is pretty laid-back committee. If you have a re, you know, just like the mayor said here, if they, our questions are, if you have a reason for doing something and you thought about it, we go along with it. There's lots of options in the Z-21. Do you want to do the 21-day rule? Do you not want to do it? Some cities do, some cities don't. We don't second-guess anybody. If they, just like the question there about draining the pools, they had a reason for it. If you have a reason for it, we, we go along. Each city has their own little idiosyncrasies and whatnot. And we've not had any controversy or anything until the second Park Hills. And our committee, we've never seen a zone change included in the Z-21. We think the Z-21 is, is form over substance. You clean up your code, you make things simpler, that was the whole idea, but not put zone changes in, especially that generate a bunch of controversy. The, the zone change, is it a good zone change? We didn't rule on the merits. It could be the greatest zone change ever. We didn't get into it, but the committee just did not like Z-21 being used to put a zone change in there. And we're thankful they took it out, and it's substantially what we approved, so we're recommending approval. Came up last minute, and I did poll my committee chairman and Dunham, and they were fine with recommending approval. So as it stands, we recommend approval.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Yeah?
I just want to thank the Z-21 committee to read all this, the entire document, to review it and everything, and then to approve it, then to get a second document, review it, and, and find that there's something that didn't pass the muster and disapproving of, of it. You know, it's, it's a long process, the Z-21. I think if we continue to have our working group committee, I think a lot of these things would have been hashed out a long time ago. They'd be on to, the city would be on to a zone change. It's, it's unfortunate that things got stagnant and didn't proceed, but we're here now, and we have what's in front of us. It is, it is extremely confusing, especially on our, on our packet that we receive. You generally have a line item that says Z-21 or the city text them, you have Park Hills, Park Hills, Park Hills, Park Hills, Park Hills. And you're trying to correlate which one's the old one, which one's the new one, and Pam did a great job doing that. But it does get confusing to see what's in it, what wasn't in it, what was put back in it. And I think, you know, transparency is a great thing. I think if we had our, our committee meeting, I think this could have been worked out a long, long time ago. And I, I just want to thank staff too, because I think staff, along with what the mayor had stated, staff kind of, you know, they presented this, and, and they did state, because I have documentation of what they stated, that you, you could place this in Z-21, but it's highly unusual, it's not the most transparent way of doing it, and, and that was relayed to the city numerous times. And I think sometimes we get, we get hinged with a development or a developer, and we kind of listen to different voices coming in, and we just had, some of us had continuing education, and there was a, a slide there that says, listen to the professionals. And on zoning and matters of zoning and this, I think the staff that does this daily for a living are the people you want to live to. Developers have their alternative understanding of what they want and, and need, and so I'm glad that we have the Z-21 committee that, that kind of parses this and looks into it, and I think we have a better work product going forward, so.
I'll just, I appreciate that, and, you know, I wouldn't, I'm not on that committee, and, you know, I'm not a Park Hills resident, and haven't, I'm, I know very little of, of the issues beyond what we have in front of us tonight, but, you know, I'll just say that while we haven't had a map amendment with the Z-21 matter, it's not uncommon where the cit, there'll be an, an application in front of us that's doing multiple things for expediency's sake. Text amendments, they're cleaning up different things at the same time, trying to, you know, permit a, a new project to move forward. So I could certainly see how the thought was to try and be efficient with it. I'm glad they landed where they did, and, and once they realized that there was some controversy over it. And then from a timing standpoint, I don't know, you know, if things got bogged down, but I will say that there are certainly other jurisdictions who have not yet come forward with their Z-21 ordinance, who have been working on it just as long as longer. So anyway, I'm happy that we're here tonight, and I think Park Hills will be well-served with the new Z-21 ordinance, and look forward to approving it tonight. So, all right, any other comments? If not, we can return to the public hearing for clarifications. Staff or others, any needed?
I think I had talked to Patrick about some of the verbiage in here, and there's some typos and things that were supposed to be removed a long time ago, and I think they cleaned things up, so.
Is that in the report or the ordinance itself?
In the ordinance itself, there was some, there was a couple line items, I think, in the appendices that got cleaned up. I think Andy took care of that with Ms. Bushell. When you, when they remove something originally, the header was still there, so just things like that.
Format.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, but other than that.
Does that mean that's incorporated in the current?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. Any other, any clarifications needed to staff or anyone else? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion whether to, to recommend approval of the Z-21 ordinance.
I'll make a motion regarding file number PC-25-0010-TX, Park Hills zoning ordinance. The request, the city of Park Hills seeks to replace the zoning ordinance with a new zoning ordinance that recognizes Park Hills' development patterns and addresses new development I move to approve the text amendment based on the facts and considerations contained in the staff report, and based on the testimony of staff and witnesses present at the public hearing, and a further finding that the proposed text amendment is in compliance, in general compliance with the comprehensive plan.
All right, that's first. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Bethel. Mr. Smith, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham.
Yes.
Commissioner France.
Yes.
Commissioner Heidrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman.
Yes.
Commissioner Armbruster.
No, he's not here.
Who do we have? Okay, we had, I'm sorry, Commissioner Baumgartner.
Yes.
There we go. Commissioner Burling.
Yes.
And let's see, it is approved.
All right, so that's the recommendation. I'll go back to the city, and we wish you well. Okay, I'm going to turn over the next matter to Mr. Ryan.
We don't have it in the place yet.
The traffic was terrible. It was terrible. Forty-three minutes to get here. Oh, yes, I was rerouted.
All right, next on the agenda is file number PC-25-25-0008-PF, Public Facility. Applicant Cory Dai, Covington Fire Chief, location 3681 Madison Pike, Fort Wright. Request a public facility review per KRS 100.324 and KRS 147.680. The applicant proposes to construct a fire training facility that includes a fire training center, vehicle storage area, off-street parking, and future police training center. The proposal includes the use of shipping containers for live burn training exercises. And Mr. Sheets, would you like to proceed?
Yep, so thank you for the record. My name is Cody Sheets with PDS Staff. As the chair stated, this is a public facilities review to construct a fire training facility. The site is located within the suburban subarea of the 2024 Kenton County Comprehensive Plan. The area of proposed development is 3.08 acres and is bounded on the north by Gateway Community and Technical College, east by CSX Railroad, and south and west by Bancliff Here we have an eagle view of the property. This is looking north. You can see Dudley Road and Madison Pike, as well as the location of Bancliff Creek. So the former training center was located in Covington and used from 1972 to 2022. The site was leased, and the site was sold in 2022, and the lease was bought out, and is now the Urumqi Covington Transfer Station. Current live burning training is taking place at the northeast corner of Oakland Avenue and Patton Street. Here we have a Google Street View from 2024 of shipping containers there. The current zoning is GI or General Industrial. The surrounding area is a mixture of commercial, institutional, and industrial. The existing land use is vacant. This is a site plan which was submitted by the applicant. It includes the property boundaries, 12,750-square-foot vehicle storage and training facility, which includes 70 provided parking spaces, six shipping containers used for live burning training, a future training tower, as well as a future police training site. And here we see a slightly closer view of the proposed development. Madison Pike is identified as a minor arterial. Dudley Road is identified as a major collector. The intersection of Madison Pike and Dudley Road does have a signal-controlled intersection. The recommended land use is commercial. So the site is located within the FEMA-mapped regulatory floodplain and FEMA-mapped regulatory floodway, and the entire site is DSA. Additional considerations and regulations will apply to any development in the area. Staff does find the proposed development to be consistent with the following areas of the comprehensive plan. And we do find conflicting or insufficient evidence- plan. And we do find conflicting or insufficient evidence with the environment element. Their reference is pursuing and promoting multifaceted approaches to preserving natural resources. KRS 100 states that public facilities must be reviewed by the planning commission. KRS 100 states instrumentalities of the state are exempt from zoning requirements. Staff is giving a favorable recommendation. We do find that the proposed development will provide opportunities for education and training for future and current firefighters and help ensure that adequate emergency response services are provided to protect public health, safety, and welfare. The site is uniquely located in an area that would make standard industrial or commercial development difficult. While the proposed development does not neatly fit into a specific use category that aligns with the existing zoning or recommended land use map, this development at this site allows for a level of intensity that is generally appropriate for the existing industrial zone and buffered from other uses while being appropriately located adjacent to existing public facilities. To better meet the recommendation of the environment element, it is recommended that a heavy vegetative buffer is maintained to function as a riparian buffer against runoff and serve as a visual screen from Madison Pike. Best management practices should also be explored in order to preserve the integrity of the stream. The Kenton County Fire Chiefs Association is an instrumentality of the state government and therefore exempt from local zoning regulations. However, to ensure, in order to ensure the proper integration into the surrounding area, staff does have the following recommendations. A lighting, landscaping, and signage plan were not shown, but it is recommended that the training facility does follow those standards within the Fort Wright zoning ordinance. Odor, noise, dust, vibration, debris, and glare standards should be followed as well during training exercises. Flood protection standards will need to be followed. The applicant may apply for a FEMA letter of map amendment which could remove the area from the flood zones if approved. SD1 provided a list of requirements which will need to be followed. And they do have a, a temporary easement, but they are in the process of obtaining a permanent easement. And that permanent easement, easement will be required before a permanent address can be assigned. And I'd be more than happy to take any questions. It's located in Fort Wright. The applicant may be able to speak a little bit further to that as to who the users will be.
Any other questions for staff? All right, then we'll proceed with the public. We have signed up Corey Die, Jim Fowler, neutral, and Don Stegman, Cardinal Engineering, four. Chief Die, how do you pronounce your name? I'm sorry.
Die is correct.
Sorry about that.
Good evening. My name is Chief Corey Die. I am the Fire Chief with the city of Covington, but I'm here tonight representing the Kenton County Fire Chiefs Association. This is not to Mr. Bridges. It's not a Covington Training Center. It is going to be a regional asset. I just happen to work for Cov, for the city of Covington. So a little bit of history, kind of Cody hit on some of it, but we, as we saw, we were in a previous site since 1982, leased through the city. When Rumke purchased that piece of property, Rumke bought the Fire Chiefs Association out of the, the remainder of our, I think it was about nine-year lease left of that for a million dollars. If we would have stayed for the nine-year lease, we would have been homeless and had no money. So the Fire Chiefs as a group decided to go ahead and let Rumke buy us out of that nine years. So we've been homeless for the last probably three-ish years, I would say, something like that. So it's, this will be the home of not only the Kent County Fire Chiefs Association, but also the Northern Kentucky Police and Sheriff's Center. So that is made up of all three counties' police departments and they do their DOJ training through the state. They currently do not have a home, and this will be the new home for that. It's very regionally located, close to 275. They can hit all, all three counties pretty quickly from that location. So Cody kind of showed you where it is. After the Fire Chiefs looked at many sites throughout the, through Kenton County, completing a travel, time, and distance study, we decided that the 275 corridor was the best location to serve the, the most amount of the communities. And ideally, you know, ultimately choosing this site. That's just kind of a 3D vision of the site. The site will be a future of public safety. Boone and Kenton have fire training centers, but this will be the first public safety campus that we're aware of, at least for this region. Our hope is to work. Also, we've already had conversations with KCTCS and Kent County School Districts for in the future, for them to use our building, kind of our equipment and stuff like that, to do dual credit training. There is currently really not dual credit classes in Kenton County for fire or police. Boone County has it, Campbell County has it, Kenton County does not. They have to plus those kids to Boone County. So the hopes is the future of this site will allow this education within the county. Just a eagle eye view of the proposed site. So we will have live burns on the south side of the property. It is pretty hidden because of the railroad tracks. It's kind of pushed back. There is vegetation now that hides those. Cody did show a picture of Patton and Oakland. That's not the best visual picture. There's about 12 or 13 containers there on Patton and Oakland that was just set there for a temporary basis. So they're scattered across that property, thanks to the city of Covington, because when we got vacated, we had to find a home for them. And that is where they ended up being. They will, and the new site will be stacked on concrete piers, have a concrete pad underneath it, and will stack and look like something more than just a bunch of Connex containers. You know, and of, it'll, it'll appear better than what it currently does. So there is a future pole barn there that is, will be used for police training. So they can use it for entry training and stuff like that. It more or less will just be a pole barn with some movable walls. Garage storage place, three, 30-person classrooms with the ability of some removable walls to make one big. There's also a, which I don't think Cody mentioned, a confined space and trench training that will be a joint adventure with SD1. We already have that agreement that we will build on kind of the, towards the railroad tracks. There used to be a trench prop on SD1's property that the Fire Chiefs used. They had to tear it down due to the new tank that they're building there by 275. So it will be relocated on this property also. So, and these are just some general pictures of what the conceptual of the building will look like.
Any questions for the chief?
So I, I guess another, because Cody did mention about burning, I will kind of make the group aware that in the fire service, we can only burn straw and skids by law. I cannot burn anything else. There's no, we cannot burn chemicals. We cannot burn fuel or anything like that. We used to. So when we do burn, we're burning, it's more or less a campfire. We do it within a content, Connex container, because as you can imagine, a campfire is not veer, very realistic to a real-life house fire. So we build it in a metal box to control, to, to trap that heat in, so at least the students can be exposed to some heat and feel it before they go in real life into an actual burnt, burning home. It produces some pretty light brown smoke. We've been burning the last couple of years for the city of Covington at Patton and Oakland with very little issues. We've actually only made one smell of smoke run of all the times that we burned in that area, and that's kind of a low lining along the flood, the flood wall. So it's, if it was going to be an issue, it would have been an issue there. I think Campbell County is, burns and has been burning in their location for many years, and it is adjacent to a very large apartment building. You can pretty well throw a rock and hit somebody on their, our deck to that apartment building with no issues. So it's really very little to know environmental impact us burning because of the like, the regulatory issues that we can only burn straw and skids.
Chief, what happens with the ash and the debris after a burn?
So we, these will be placed on a concrete pad. So we hose it off, shovel it up, put it in a dumpster.
And chief, the runoff containment?
So it is all underground. SD1's already approved that. Is that correct? So it is, there will be underground tanks under part of the parking lot.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Yep. Thank you.
Next up, Jim, is it Fowler?
I believe he left.
Okay. And Don Stegman? All right.
I got a question for Don.
You knew this was coming, Don.
We're not going to let you just come here and not speak.
Hey, I was trying to make it easy.
I can't believe that you cannot get exemption from SD1 for stormwater detention when the Mill Creek's sitting right there.
That's a good statement. I don't know how to answer that question.
I mean, I don't think that this runoff from this site is going to increase the flooding of Mill Creek, but that's.
Well, it's Banklet.
Banklet.
Banklet, I'm sorry.
But yes, I, I can agree with you in spirit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's yours, chief.
I, I will say, SD1 has at least been working with us. So it has, they have been helpful along that line of it. I do agree with you and understand and trust me, have jumped through lots of hoops when it comes to that. But they at least have been working with us very well to at least cut some costs down for the taxpayers.
And I'm glad you're not burning mattresses like I had to go through a Navy boot camp.
When I, when I started, we used to, but it's no longer a thing, so.
Don, real quickly, the heavy buffers described in the report for environmental elements, what, what efforts have you made in regard to those, those requests from the PDS?
Yeah, so most of it is along Banklet Creek. So the majority of the trees and stuff that are there will remain because it is lower kind of along the creek and on the other side as you come up towards Madison. We will have to take out some of, most of. It's honeysuckle and smaller stuff. I don't envision us having to take, from what I've walked so far, very many of the large underbrush. It's most of those big trees and kind of the stuff that you see now is down closer to the creek or up on the other side of it going up towards Madison. So there will be some vegetation, vegetation that has to come out, but I do not envision that it's going to be, you're going to see a huge change in, in the landscape down there.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. No other questions? Recession public hearing? Discussion amongst commissioners?
Just a quick comment. I was a Fire Chief of Fort Wright '85 to '89, and this was a topic with the Kent County Fire Chiefs Association back then that was kind of noted on there. So it's pleasant to see it come together so quickly.
Any other discussion? Okay, reconfining the, the public hearing? Any clarifications needed? I don't think so. We'll close the public hearing. I guess I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Burling?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on file PC-25-0008-PF, applicant Corey Die from the Covington Fire Department, Kenton County assets. Regarding 3681 Madison Pike in Fort Wright, a public facility review, the applicant proposing a fire training facility that includes training centers, vehicle storage, off-street parking, and future police training, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application based on the fact that the, the applicant is in, consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and also meet the requirements of KRS 100-324 and 147 dot 68.
Second.
Mr. Sketch, seconds? Mr. Smith, take your role?
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Sketch?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Bethel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner DeAngelis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunham has left? Commissioner France?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
And the motion is approved.
Very good. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, reports from committees. Executive Committee has no, had no meeting. Direction 2030 implementation?
We had a meeting last month. We got a, an update from the, from our, from the individuals that are doing the housing, the housing study, our contractors. We got updated on their progress. We also received updates on the benchmarks that they're doing for us, and everything's going beautifully. And we're going to have a meeting in January.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Subdivision review.
I'll do a report.
Nothing to report? Z21 Review Committee?
I think we've already covered that.
You guys have been very busy. All right, reports from commission members. Any reports?
I have some to report.
Mr. Bethel?
In the idea of transparency, I just wanted to let everybody here know, I have greatly appreciated serving on this commission. It's been a, been a real honor. But as of December 31st of this year, I'll be resigning the commission. So, once again, I want to thank you all. This has been a real honor to work with the, the quality of people that we have here. And Kent County is well-served by this commission. And I don't know that they know how well-served they are, but they are very well-served by this commission. Everybody takes a lot of care, a lot of thought in what they do. And Fort Mitchell will be appointing someone else. I have already talked to my mayor. I have talked to Chairman Dunham. So I just wanted to, that you all know. So he'll look at my spot and say, "He's never here. Where is he?"
I'd like to say to Commissioner Bethel, you've, you've done an honorable job here. You've, you've taken on challenges. You've followed through with them. You've been a voice of reason and you definitely will be sorely missed and deeply appreciated for your service. I thank you very much. Please stop back anytime as well. Reports from legal counsel?
Nothing to report.
Reports, announcements from staff? Mr. Denbo? Ms. Bushelman?
Yes, I'm Pamela Bushelman, Secretary, Staff for PDS Planning and Zoning. If anyone attended the Kentucky League of Cities Planning and Zoning Training, just remember that they said that you would not, it may take about two weeks for you to get your certificates. Once you get those, you do not have to fill out a separate continuing in education form. Forward me that email and I'll put it down in your report and send you a new report, okay?
And that's coming to our KCPC email account, correct?
Yes, yes. So be sure that you're checking your KCPC account, because that's how we have to sign you up.
And Ms. Bushelman, that, there was no housing component in there, was there?
No, there's, there's one that is going to be coming up. I don't have the details on it. As soon as I do, I'll make sure that that gets out to you.
Okay, I think it's on the.
And the county, actually.
Okay, I think it was KLC was doing one on the 19th, but I didn't know if that's, and it's an hour for housing?
Yes, it is the one hour for housing.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just don't have all the details on it yet. I'm, I'm looking into it.
All right, thank you, Pamela. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
General correspondence. Staff, do you know if we have any general correspondence? Taking over for Mr. Dunham. Staff, do you know if we have any general correspondence taking over for Mr. Dunham? I don't think I saw anything. All right, there being none. New business, Mr. Denbo?
No staff comments from me, but you're not done with me yet. So, thank you very much. So, what we, what we are presenting to you is a request that's in response to Kentucky House Bill 160, which is changing how zoning can regulate qualified manufactured homes. And this will become effective on July 1st of 2026. Key provisions of House Bill 160 includes updating the definition of qualified manufactured homes, prohibiting zoning from excluding qualified manufactured homes in any zone where single-family homes are allowed, prohibits architectural or foundation requirements that are above and beyond what is typically required for a single-family home, and provides some exceptions to the development standards where lot sizes may make compliance impossible. So, for example, if there's a small lot and someone wants to do a qualified manufactured home, there are standards for size on that home. If that standard cannot be met because of the small lot, then adjustments can be made so that that house can be, can be placed. Staff has conducted outreach about the changes to state law for this, about House Bill 160. We've presented to the mayor's group, to the city-county administrators group. We have corresponded directly with local jurisdictions and have made presentations at council meetings when requested. So, what we're proposing is the minimum changes needed to bring our zoning regulations into compliance with the new state law, and this will include updating the definition of single-family home, so that it includes qualified manufactured home as, essentially as part of a single-family home, or a single-family home would include qualified manufactured homes. Updating the definition of qualified manufactured home to match the new state law, removing qualified manufactured home as a separate use. So, again, we're proposing to insert qualified manufactured home within the definition of single-family home and then remove it as a, as a separate use, and then eliminate any separate standards that only apply to qualified manufactured homes in compliance with the state law, since they cannot be treated differently than single-family homes. So, the proposed text changes are available for review online. We also do have printouts available for review over here on the table as well for each jurisdiction. And then because zoning regulations vary, not all of these changes will apply in every community. And so, again, this is a request for KCPC to authorize an application that would come before the commission then next month for text amendments for all of the jurisdictions.
No, I'd just like to say a few things. I'd like to commend PDS staff for taking up this House Bill 160. You know, PDS doesn't have to do this, but as Mr. Bethel was mentioning, they go above and beyond in taking a leadership role on this new bill that's coming about in July 2026. They've gone through and educated all of Kenton County, the cities, the county, and they've looked at all the different jurisdictions and categorized those to be able to have a format for each jurisdiction depending on the type of zoning they have. We've worked with them. I think they've done an excellent job, and just like to congratulate them for tackling this and making sure the community's ready to deal with it. I've reviewed it. I agree with their proposed text amendments and the standards that they're putting out.
Do we need to take a vote?
I just, I have just one question. So, what you're going to bring next month, is it, is it county-wide text amendment, but it's going to be different in each zoning code, or is it going to be the same in each?
It depends on, so obviously, some of our zones are still under the old zoning ordinances, I'm sorry, some of our cities still have the old zoning ordinances. Some have Z-21. Covington has something, you know, all of their own. So, there will be some variations city by city, depending on, you know, what changes need to be made for what they already have within their ordinance.
So, we're just, what we're doing is actually doing one for all the cities, so we don't have 20 different jurisdictions coming in here.
Correct, correct. So, this will, similar to what we did with the family childcare homes, if you remember that, that came through as a county-wide text amendment with attachments for all the various jurisdictions.
Does, does that get updated through everybody that's already done Z-21, or do they have to come in and accept that and have a text amendment?
For this project, yes. So, everyone will be included. All of the jurisdictions in Kenton County will be included within this request, this application. The various attachments, like I was saying, can vary depending on the zoning ordinance that they currently have.
Are they permitted to refuse it?
They, I would leave that up to their legal counsel. Each city's legal counsel.
They, yeah, they can refuse to adopt the text amendment, but they're going to have to come into compliance. If they view there's a different way to come into compliance, they adopt their, and submit their own application. But I wouldn't foresee any of the jurisdictions not approving this. I can see them making some edits, but it's in line with what I believe that each jurisdiction should be doing.
And Mr. Dunbo, when you say that every city's different zoning and stuff, it's for residential application, correct?
Right, right, but the, if a jurisdiction has the Z-21 ordinance, what needs to be changed is going to be different than if they have the old code.
Okay, very good. Well, go ahead, Mr. France.
Are mobile homes considered qualified manufactured homes? I would think not. So, that's, that's all included in the definition of qualified manufactured home?
Right, right. So, they are or aren't? Right, so state law, KRS defines what a manufactured home, a qualified manufactured home and a mobile home are. There's three different uses. So, this is simply affecting the qualified manufactured homes.
Okay. Mr. Bridges?
Are we going to see one document, or are we going to see 19 versions of a document?
There will be one staff report with attachments from each jurisdiction.
So, 19 appendices?
Exactly.
And they'll be headed each setting?
Yes.
Any other questions? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to text amendment for manufactured housing?
To submit the application before the commission?
To submit the application before the commission.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Mr. Martin? You take a roll call, Mr.? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none. Any public comments? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Schneider, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.